Good morning, everyone. It is nine thirty and I would like to call today's regular county council meeting to order. We will start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty Six and Treaty Eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. I see that we do have one councillor joining us with Zoom. That's Mrs Councillor Wallack. And we will start with the two point one, the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Seeing none. Councillor Chamzick would like to go forward to with the motion to approve the agenda without additions or deletions. But before we do that, we will also go around the room for council to decide which items they would like to discuss. What I know of so far is two point one, six point one, seven point two, seven point three, eight point two, ten point one U, and all of closed session items twelve point one through twelve point four. Are there any other items that councillors would like to discuss? I think we're all good. Go ahead, Councillor Anderson.
Could I please add seven point one?
I'm sorry?
Seven point one.
Seven point one? Okay, any others? Go ahead, Councillor.
Seven point four.
Seven point four? Ready?
Just want to add some to the calendar.
And eight point one, okay? Eight point one A, awesome. Okay. And is that, everybody will run through the list again. All right, so we are at two point one, six point one, seven point one, seven point two, seven point three, seven point four, eight point one A, eight point two, ten point one U, and all of closed session items twelve one through twelve four. All righty, and on the motion from Councillor Chamzick to accept the agenda as discussed, to approve the agenda as discussed, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I don't see any opposed. Nine and oh, thank you. We will start with six point one on page eighteen of your package, which is bylaw zero two seven twenty twenty five, subdivision and land use authorities and bylaw zero twenty eight twenty twenty five land use bylaw amendment. And I will turn this over. I'm not sure who would like to speak this morning, but Ms Director Wilkinson, would you like to weigh in on this report or yourself? Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of council. Before you is a report with respect to reconsideration of the planning and subdivision authorities for the county. And it's really in the spirit of streamlining the decision making and administration is recommending that the municipal planning commission be dissolved and that the chief administrative officer be assigned the subdivision and development authorities, which would also include the authority to further delegate. So as you know, MPC currently has both authorities. All subdivisions go to MPC and discretionary permits, some discretionary permits, development go to MPC as well as anything that requires a variance over ten percent. So it's important to recognize, however, that any application that doesn't comply with the land use bylaw must go through council in one way or another, whether that be a redistricting application or an area structure plan. So there's still that oversight of council in the planning and development processes. So the the next section of the report really is included to signify that any changes to your subdivision or development authorities doesn't in any way change the applicant's right or the any affected parties' right to participate in that process. Those are legislated processes. So regardless of who is making that decision, whether it be the MPC administration, the rights of the public do not change. They'll still continue. So I don't know if you want me to walk through all of the different processes for subdivision and development. I don't know if that's required right now, but I think it's important to talk about the alignment between administrations recommendations and decisions of the MPC. And that is included in the report on page twenty of your agenda package. So you will see that we broke it down for three years, from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four, between the different subdivision applications and the different development applications. And you can see based upon the tally, largely, the administration's recommendations are aligned with, or MPC's decisions are aligned with the recommendations that come forward from administration. Particularly if you were to tally up the aligned and substantially aligned, you're looking at eighty four percent for development applications that go before the MPC and really a hundred percent of subdivision applications that go forward are endorsed by the MPC based upon administration's recommendation. And if you were to further actually kind of take out twenty twenty two and all of those recommendations, you will see that it changes for development applications. It goes up substantially to ninety one percent of alignment between the administration recommendations and the decisions of the MPC. So I just, I maybe need to speak just briefly about this substantially aligned. So either when I say aligned, what I mean is the MPC approved administration's decision as presented substantially aligned. There may have been a slight change to a reason or a condition, but it doesn't change whether or not the the recommendation to approve or deny was still endorsed by the MPC. And so I think that's really important to see that alignment. There's a really good understanding between administration and MPC as to how you'd like to see planning decisions into the future. And then on the next page, it breaks down the different types of or adjacent nearby or comparable municipalities and the different structures they have for their planning authorities. And I don't know if you want me to go through these, but it really just highlights that there are different ways of achieving the decisions. And those can be through MPC, they can be through administration. You could have third parties and in some situations, council is the subdivision and or development authority. So I don't know if you want me to walk anything, go through anything more, but I'm happy to answer questions or.
Thank you so much, Ms McConnell. I appreciate your presentation with regards to the report. I believe, does a council have any questions or? Go ahead, please, Councillor Anderson.
Thank you. In the event that the authority was delegated to administration, what kind of advertising is there around the permits? Like, they would no longer be in an MPC agenda or coming to MPC for approval. So just how would those decisions be advertised? And how would the members of the public become aware of them?
Sure. Thank you. The the process wouldn't change. So a file that would go towards the municipal planning commission would be, as an example, discretionary. The land use bylaw has requirements for advertising and it, I broke it down here. It's either in the newspaper or on the website. So those requirements do not change whoever is making the decision. Similarly, if there's a notification to adjacent landowners, that would still happen. Permitted uses permits for development are different, only because that's what the municipal government act says. There's there's no right to appeal unless there are some misunderstandings. So that also wouldn't change. I do think it's really important, though, to to recognize that the municipal planning commission actually doesn't have to hold meetings in public. The MGA does allow for the municipal planning commission to hold meetings in private anyways. I'm not suggesting that that's what happening, but the the MGA recognizes that decisions for planning can be different than the decisions at the governance level.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any? Please go ahead, Councillor Hall.
I would move the recommended motion that bylaw zero two seven be given first reading.
Thank you. Is there any further? Please go ahead.
Thank you. I am vastly opposed to this, actually, and I think I'm trying to think of my wording here, but I I do not support this. I do not support this becoming holy and administration thing. Whether or not we're aligned or not, it is part of the job and part of what we should be doing for information. And you know what? We have not been a hundred percent aligned. And even the clarification, knowing what is going on in our communities, being able to ask the questions, make the small changes are very important. If administration is overburdened with meetings, maybe we talk about adding it to committee of the whole. If they want to cut down on the meetings out there and make me a subsection into that meeting. But I am not in favor of giving all that to administration. We owe it to our ratepayers to actually go listen, talk, go through it, whether we agree with the recommendations or not. That is a very important part of what we do. We've gotten rid of many different committees during our term. Policy review, budget finance, public works. And now we're talking about getting rid of another part of the job that we've been brought in to do. And I respect the member across for making the motion, but I urge my peers not to pass that motion.
Thank you. Any other, Councillor Chamzick?
You know, I'm really happy to see that the advertising would be the same and all of those things. But I do feel somewhat aligned with that thought of, you know, being nearly at the end of our tenure. As said at the table, if we're lucky enough to be sitting here, if it should be the new council's choice to be able to have that decision responsibility.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Deputy Reebens?
Yeah, I agree with that, too. It's, we're, what, three meetings out from from the new term? New council coming in, and I think to do a big change like this, I think it should be waiting until the new council comes in and then they can decide if they want to keep the committee or remove it on. I seen, part of me sees nothing wrong with with removing the committee, but part of me is sitting there saying, maybe we should just cool our jets and let the let the new new council. I think, I think if I remember right, if we start this bylaw and not all the council gets back in, chances are it's going to have to restart anyway. So why why start it? So, yeah, I'm I'm not in agreement of it. I enjoy the MPC meetings, actually. Administration does a great job. And there's not a lot that that comes to it that that's very discretionary and stuff like that. And and I I commend administration on that fact that that it's not a long meeting and everything's running smooth. So I commend administration for that fact that it's, to me, it's a great committee. But thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yep, we'll definitely get to you for sure before we do first reading. I think I'll also weigh in here and I echo your thoughts as well. I think administration does an amazing job. And they're very efficient at what they're they're doing and what they bring to us allows us to be extremely efficient as well. I feel that council benefits from sitting on the commission. We're able to see what's going on in our divisions, see what's going on in the municipality as a whole, make those decisions based on what we are understanding is happening in our divisions, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that that's extremely important. That council has a part in that as well. I will be voting against the first reading, as I also agree that this is coming to very too too close, very close to the end of our term. And with a new council coming in, depending on who is sitting at the table, there may be some steep learning curves. And I know we all felt that. And to understand what happens in development and what happens at the the commission itself, municipal planning commission, is extremely important and beneficial for for all councillors to take in. So with that, is there anyone else who? Go ahead, Councillor Cromwell?
Thank you. And just for honest transparency for for something of this magnitude at the end of the term, I will ask for a recorded vote.
Okay, recorded vote has been requested. We, I guess I should also mention, too, this was not, so the public understands, this was not a request of council. This was brought forward by administration. I did have that question as well. Is there any further around the table? Go ahead, please, Councillor Hall.
I think we need to remember this is first reading, not third reading. And if you truly care about what the public says and thinks, then pass first reading and hold the public hearing and hear what our ratepayers actually have to say. I mean, MPC is more or less a rubber stamp committee based on the stats. Certainly, we know there's a competitive advantage to being able to approve developments more quickly, to be able to process that more expediently. And the data demonstrates MPC is on on balance an unnecessary bureaucracy that consumes admin time that we could put to better use. Because it's not just the length of the meeting. It's the length of the time getting ready for the meeting and the length of the time preparing the agenda and getting all of that done. This is not just part of the job. It's actually only just what we've always been doing. It isn't a necessary part of the job. And, you know, we're here to make decisions. We have the benefit of nearly four years' experience, and I think we should put that to use, at least to go through first reading and hold a public hearing. Now, if we're at a place where, because we're coming to an election in October, we don't want to make any decisions. Are we going to cancel the rest of the meetings between now and then because and defer everything into the new term? I I don't really find a lot of logic in that. I I think we're here to make decisions. So this this change does require a public hearing, which is a chance for people to provide input. And I'm not afraid to hear from them. So let's let's hear from them. And if and then it gives us a chance to defeat it at second reading, once we've had a chance to truly and democratically explore a possibility to make our meetings and our county function better and more productively.
Thank you very much for sharing your opinion, Councillor Hall. Is there any comments? All right. I believe you were able to speak after last word for sure. So we will then go to the point of Councillor Hall would like to move that bylaw zero two seven dash twenty twenty five be given first reading. This is a recorded vote, so I ask that you please keep your hands up so that we can make sure we capture you all. All those in favor?
Aye.
Councillor Wallack, Councillor Capitanic, Councillor Hall, and Councillor Anderson, and all those opposed. Councillor Cromwell, Councillor Gerlock, Deputy Reeve Minns, myself, Councillor Holland, and Councillor Chamzick. Bills? Ready? Moving forward. Item seven point one is next, which is on page forty five of your package. This is policy two eight five five, sale of county property. I believe there is a recommendation here that county council rescind policy two eight five five, sale of county property, general listing. Ms Clushay, would you like to weigh in on the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. Administration is requesting that council consider rescinding policy twenty eight fifty five. And that's due to the fact that on the July, or sorry, during the July thirty first regular council meeting, council adopted a new land sale policy, which administration believes covers a more in-depth process and a more transparent process of the sale of land. At the end of the day, before land goes for sale, it still has to come to council, or all those files requests would have to come to council so that they can consider whether or not they want to dispose of the land and then choose the method of selling. So that does come back to council before any sale can occur. And a sale can happen through a request from a ratepayer or a landowner or the public, or it could come through a request through administration or council. So.
Yeah, thank you very much. Councillor Anderson, you asked for this to be placed on the agenda. Would you like to put forth a motion or?
I'll move the recommended motion.
Recommended motion. Is there discussion? All righty, Councillor Anderson would like to move that county council rescind policy two eight five five, sale of county property, general listing. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None? That would be nine and oh. Thank you. All righty, item seven point two, housing permits, page fifty six of your agenda. This one is to receive the housing permits update for information, as and Councillor Cromwell would like to put that motion forward on the floor. But Director Wilkinson, would you like to weigh in on the report?
I don't have much to add, Madam Chair. I think it's important to note that the values are as stated by the applicants. So that's those numbers, you know, we always have questions about those numbers. So it's just, it's important to keep that in mind. And then I guess the other thing that I would point out is that as-built dwellings would be ones that we come across in our processes that don't currently have development approval. And so we work through that with the applicants. And like, they're already there, right?
Okay, thank you. And just one quick question. The dwelling, is that all season or could that be a cabin or?
It would include all of them. We don't differentiate between seasonal or or year round because that's a slippery slope.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. Is there any discussion on this one? Personally, I really appreciate this report. I think that this is fantastic to have these stats come forward. And I know we're going through a housing assessment right now, included with the village and the town. And having this information before us really shows there's great things happening in Athabasca County and that people are are still wanting to come here and live here and to see all these these housing stats, especially with the new dwellings as well. It's fantastic. So I think we've got a lot of good things to offer here in the county, and I really appreciate you bringing this forward. Any other comments? All righty. So Councillor Cromwell would like to move that we receive the housing permit update for information. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I see no opposed. Thank you, nine and oh. On page sixty of your package is seven point three, the Caslin and Rochester extension feasibility reports. And let's see here. We have Ms Percy here, yep, available to speak. The recommendation here is to receive the report as information. Would you like to go ahead and weigh in on this one, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so Athabasca County was approved for water for life funding for both feasibility study in Caslin and Rochester for water service to the areas. The studies were for a truck fill in each of those locations, and they studied three different methods of that. One was an extension from the regional water line or doing groundwater treatment or doing surface water treatment. The, in Caslin, the groundwater treatment was deemed insufficient. There wasn't enough groundwater. And Rochester, there's two different alignments that were studied. So, yeah, based on those studies and based on both the capital and the operating and maintenance costs and doing like a net present value on that, they found that the Caslin, a Caslin extension, and it would be just prior to the boil distribution system. That's where it would come off of and go into Caslin. That would be about twenty six point four million in capital. And the Rochester extension would be off of the Collington reservoir there, and that would be thirty seven point eight million. Any questions?
Thank you so very much. I see also in your report that we could apply for the water for life funding for ninety percent of the project cost, which would be two point six four million non-fundable portion if approved. So I'm not sure if this is something we want to push to budget, that we're having that conversation or not, but is there a motion? Go ahead. As recommended. Okay, recommendation from Councillor Chamzick is to receive the report as information. Is there discussion? Go ahead, please.
On page sixty one here, when is the commission presenting the master plan due? Is there any timeline for that?
I'm not sure when they're going to have their final. I know that they just presented the draft. That was just last week. And I believe comments were to be in the next couple of weeks. So I'm guessing in maybe a month or so, but that's.
Thank you. Councillor Hall?
I'd like to amend it to add the words and refer to the next strategic planning session. This this should not be yet another report that's received and sits on a shelf. We've spent the money on this. It should be something that has full consideration to council as to whether it's a priority, what portions of it are a priority. And I think too often municipalities get something like this on the and then park it. And it needs to be something that's considered how, whether, and if it fits into the strategic goals of of the county. And and then county can can apply budget, a budget to it in a future-looking kind of way, if it if it is, if one or both portions of this are deemed to be priorities.
Thank you. Would that be a friendly amendment? Yes, okay. Sounds like a friendly amendment to me is good to go with everyone. Go ahead, Councillor Anderson.
I'd be in support of the amended motion. I think it's really important to be able to take this information and decide if it is a project, or if there is a project that our county would like to pursue in future grant applications, or whether possibly there's another feasibility study going a different direction that we may want to look at prior to making a decision on a future construction project, though. I don't want to see it just put on a shelf. I do think that this is really valuable information and something should be done with it.
Awesome. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Councillor Gerlock?
Spending that kind of money and having a truck fill at the end of it doesn't seem like much of a solution. It seems like an awful lot of money to spend. I don't know whether a person should be looking at the fact, like in the case of Rochester, putting a a reservoir in there and trucking the water in. Man, you park forty million dollars in the bank and and you sweat interest it compiles, you probably haul all the water for it just does, that's an awful lot of money to spend just to have a truck fill. Just doesn't equate for me. People still need the service to their house. And to see the money put into providing that service and getting the water there some other way other than a pipeline seems to make more sense to me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Deputy Reebens?
It's, yeah, it's great information. I remember the first one to come through is, I think it was around twenty eight million. Now it's up thirty seven million and it's great information. It is to a truck fill, whether we go to Rochester or we just go to in between Rochester and Prairieville. It's, that's another decision. The main thing is to to get water closer to people is 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 the main objective of this study. It's it's that's what I find, but but it should be looked at more and more. When we spend this money, we should, we should look at it. So I'm in total agreement of of the amended motion to to take it to a strategic plan and see where it goes from there. You betcha.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And just maybe to try to hint at some context, we spend a couple million dollars on gravel every year, which is, you know, we just pour it on the ground. And so when you look at these types of projects, with the ten percent contribution of the county, if we invest two or three with the ten percent contribution of the county, if we invest two or three million dollars, you have a seventy, eighty, hundred-year project that makes a difference for multiple generations. So I think, you know, yeah, forty million's a lot of money, but our portion is significantly less, and as we, you know, we're not doing the strategic planning right now, but as you think about how we as a council make life better and more livable in our region, this kind of investment is one that pays dividends for generations. And so that's where, you know, that discussion at a budget and strategic planning session around the priorities of these options, and whether there are any other options that need to be considered will be really interesting, but getting infrastructure closer to more people is important.
Thank you. And I definitely agree, this report is valuable, and one that we should definitely, or future council should definitely be looking at and considering in their planning. So I don't see anyone else with anything else to add. Being we had a friendly amendment here, the motion that Counselor Chamsik would like to put forward is to receive report as information and refer to next strategic planning session. If everyone is ready for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I see no opposed. Thank you. The next item we have is on page two fourteen of your agenda package, seven point four, the STIP grant approval for B Bridge File eight one one two nine, Bridge Rehabilitation. And I believe, I'll just get there with me. Any more? The recommendation here is to receive the letter from Minister of Transportation and Economic Corridors, and direct administration to include the Bridge File project in the draft twenty-twenty-six municipal budget, and that administration begins engineering work required for the bridge contract with funding to come from the road construction reserve. And that would be Deputy Reedmans as recommended?
Yep, as recommended, and I just want to say great work by everybody that's moved this along and actually moving along as a team, working together with the, with LPAC and transportation, and just wanted to commend everybody for removing this forward. So that's why I wanted to throw it on the agenda, to make sure people get thanked that that need to be thanked. So thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Is there any other further comments on this one? Go ahead, please, Counselor Hall.
A few minutes ago, we heard that we shouldn't be making any major decisions, given the time of the election cycle. So I would propose that, you know, spending a major decision like this should be tabled until the first meeting in November.
I'm sorry, first reading of the bylaw?
No, the motion. There's no bylaw here.
No, there's no motion. I thought you had said first reading of the bylaw.
No.
So you want to table this item?
I, I yes, we had heard that we shouldn't be making major decisions until after the election, and so I would propose we table this until the first meeting of November.
Yeah, there was, we can still, we have to do the tabling, and then we come back to it. Table is of no debate. So, all those in favor to table this item? All those opposed to table this item? Okay, the motion on the floor from Deputy Reedmans to receive the recommend, or to go for it as recommended, so I don't have to read the whole thing all over again. Is there any further? Go ahead, please.
Well, I still don't understand what that was all about, but this bridge needs to be worked on. And we're here to move infrastructure along, and we have a grant, and let's get after it. So I recommend that we move this motion forward.
Thank you. And as you mentioned, we do have a grant that we have received. We also have funding from our very important partner in this project, and I agree that it also should move forward, and really appreciate our Transportation and Economic Corridors and Honorable Devon Dreschen's letter that we received for this very important project. Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you. I'd like to remind my peers around the table that there's a difference between moving projects and moving our county forward, and taking things away from, or changing the way the county is running, and that is the difference between MPC and and of getting a bridge done, infrastructure, something we've been talking about for four years, water, something we've been talking about for four years. Why we would waste any time in shelving something when we can actually make benefits today for tomorrow is to me interesting.
Alright, and I don't see any further hands, so please, Counselor Hall.
Clearly, I support the work on an important piece of infrastructure like this. And I'm of the view that this council is the authority until the moment we're not, and we're here to make decisions. And, but I think it's important to give those who don't want to make decisions a chance to not make them, so that's why that emotion came forward. I do support doing this, and I think that the this is an example of the good work and the partnership that can happen with industry and with the Alberta government. And I hope that we get the press on this positive announcement that it deserves, because this this, I think we know is a little bit of a divergence from how the government often does things, where they wait for things to be an absolute catastrophe before they fund it. And the province deserves some recognition for stepping up and and doing some preventative and necessary maintenance at a relatively modest cost in terms of the value of this asset, rather than waiting for a catastrophic failure and spending twenty times more money.
Thank you. Any further, Deputy Reedmans?
I guess just a quick comment. Hopefully, we get positive press on this and not some negative due to the fact of the way this all went around, but I really I really recommend that we move this along, and it is a very important transportation corridor that we work with with a big partner here. So, yeah, let's get some positive press out of it and moving on.
Alright, okay, I believe that's all comments. So if we're ready for the question, Deputy Reedmans would like to go forward with the recommended motion to receive the letter from Minister of Transportation and Economic Corridors, and direct administration to include the Bridge File project in the draft twenty-twenty-six municipal budget, and that administration begins engineering work required for the bridge contract with funding to come from the road construction reserve. If we're ready for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I see no opposed. Thank you, nine and oh. This moves us on to our next item, which is Community Event Calendars, eight point one A, page two twenty-seven of your agenda package, and I believe Counselor Capitanic.
I just want to, sorry, I just wanted to add in, the Collington Community Harvest Dance will be on October eighteenth at seven PM at the Collington Community Hall. You can get tickets from myself, or from Value Drug Mart, or any other Collington community club member. It is all ages, but tickets are required for all ages. And then I also wanted to ask my counselor to the right, Mr. Gerlock, is the Rochester Senior Supper the first Thursday of every month? Okay, I didn't see it on here, so I was also wanting to go to that.
Sorry, that's the Rochester Senior Supper?
Yeah.
And that's on October second?
I'm gonna go with that, because that's why I wanted to ask Mr. Gerlock, so would you put it on there? Because it's about the time of year where I need to start eating fall suppers.
They are delicious. Counselor Chamsik?
Tonight is the Atmore Community League general meeting at the end of the month. On the Monday, on the twenty-ninth, would be Grassland. And then October, the twenty-seventh for Grassland as well.
And October twenty-seventh is the just regular meeting for Grassland?
Correct.
Aye? Yes? Okay, thank you. And what time?
Seven.
Seven. Perfect. Is there any other additions to the community calendar? Alrighty, so if we can take it to the question, do you have a motion you'd like to receive as? Counselor Chamsik would like to receive the September and October event calendars as discussed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I see no opposed. Nine and oh, thank you. We are on to Meeting Calendars, which is page two thirty-four of your agenda package. September and October, spilling up fast. Alright, go ahead, Counselor Chamsik.
In September, the eighteenth Town Library has been changed to the twenty-fifth due to the town appreciation. October eighth would be ASB in the morning. And the October thirteenth, FCSS is canceled due to timing of the upcoming election.
Okay, and I'm sorry. And Thanksgiving. Alright, so FCS, okay, perfect. Everybody get all that one? Alrighty, if I may also weigh in, September, let me see, what day is that? September sixteen, Sturgeon County will be hosting the Pinewood Trail, which is part of the Athabasca Landing Trail Grand Opening at six PM. There was, you mentioned the appreciation dinner at five thirty on the eighteenth. We also have, you mentioned ASB, where there will also be a bridge dedication happening along the Athabasca Landing Trail in Collington at one PM on the ninth. That's tentative. Just make sure that that's tentative. There is a virtual ALTSC meeting at nine AM on the tenth. And I believe that's all that I have. Go ahead, Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you very much. The Northern Lake College meeting is moved to September twenty-two at eleven thirty AM. And I don't see it on the calendar. There is a County Library Board meeting tonight at six PM.
New library, six PM. Okay. Is there anybody else? Counselor Hall?
We have special council meetings booked on the second and the sixth of October, and I'm wondering if that cannot be consolidated into one meeting?
That would have to be something administration would decide?
No, we decide.
Well, I think that they would know what's involved.
Sorry, Madam Chair, what question do you have of administration?
It would be, can we consolidate the special council meeting October second and October sixth?
What was the one on the second for?
Budget. October second is budget.
So the sixth is not going to be a terribly long meeting.
Not sure if there's.
Madam Chair, the one that administration asked for was October second for budget. The one on October sixth, I believe, was at your request for personnel.
Right, thank you.
So that's your call if you want to do it on one day.
Unfortunately, because of the scheduling for that particular, thank you for your reminding me that, of that, the scheduling for that has to happen on the sixth.
So can we move the second to the sixth afterward?
We don't have the, we were given a list of dates that were given from the consultant.
No, the question was, can we move the second to the?
Oh, well then, sorry, I'm sorry. If we can move this, if we can move the second to the sixth, that's fine. I'm assuming that's fine with administration. It's their agenda and their budget to bring forward, so I would say he's shaking his head. So we can change those up. Nine thirty AM for personnel, I'm not sure how many, how long that that's going to be, so I can't give you a time at this point, but I will talk to the consultant and come back with the time for the special meeting for the second to be changed to the sixth. Alright. Are there any other items? Go ahead, Deputy Reedmans.
September nineteenth, I've got a Athabasca Watershed Council meeting on Zoom. I think that's.
What's up?
On the thirteenth, September thirteenth, we have there should be a special meeting with the the Water Auto Commission on the thirteenth. That's gonna be at the town at eight o'clock, I think it starts.
Okay.
Eight.
And I see also the IMC meeting for which day was that? The IMC, is that going now up here? That was.
The IMC has been canceled on
Yes, the tenth.
Yeah, why was that?
Sorry.
Do we know why that one was canceled? Nothing to really talk about. The agreement hasn't come back from from the large yet, I guess, or something like that, so there's really nothing. Couldn't come up with a an agenda, so.
Okay. Are there any other changes or additions? I think we're good.
Proof is amended.
Counselor Cromwell would like to approve the calendars as discussed. As amended, all those, we're ready for the question, all those in favor? I see no opposed, so that would be nine and oh. Thank you. Alrighty. I just have to find my first page here. We have, the next item up is ten point one U under Reports, and Counselor Chamsik, please go ahead.
Stop coming in from FCSS for an overview of the family resource for network role, providing supports for children in need from zero to eight, but also supporting parents and caregivers. All nine agreements with municipal partners have been renewed. Generous donation was received from the state of Stanley Terrapula in kindness and generation, generosity. It will be recognized, he will be recognized in the Athabasca Pavilion being built by Rotary Club. And also, the protective barbecue services was a great success, and our next meeting would be November tenth.
Thank you. Always good work at FCSS. Always, always, always awesome. Alright. I believe we are at the stage of the, thank you very much. Yeah, we're going to take a break once we go into close. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is eight and oh. We are now officially in close, so we will. Thank you so very much. I'll just get organized here. We have just come out of closed. We have three motions to put on the floor. Twelve point one of your agenda is the recommended motion. Deputy Reedmans would like to recommend that county denies the request to purchase northeast one sixty-four twenty west of the fourth, and southeast twelve sixty-four twenty west of the fourth. And it's not a recommendation that council would like to deny that, as recommended. Okay, if we're ready for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? One, that would be eight and one. Thank you. Item twelve point two. Deputy Reedmans would like to direct administration to discuss with Summer Village CAOs the potential of the county being sole funding municipality for the waterline project and follow up with correspondence as necessary. No further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I see no opposed. Nine and oh, thank you. And the last item we have, twelve point three, Counselor Anderson would like to direct administration to continue discussions with the Aspen Regional Water Services Commission regarding updating agreements, level of service, and reviewing asset management processes. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I see no opposed, nine and oh, and we will adjourn today's meeting at eleven eighteen. Thank you.